To order if we can start with a pledge of allegiance and then have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Here.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here, excuse me, sorry. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to a COVID update by our city manager, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Quick updates. Talked to the town of Normal and McLean County quite often. Camille Rodriguez, the county administrator, is excellent, providing information. And she wanted to share, asked me to share this. COVID vaccine discussions are ongoing. That's something that the Health Department is definitely very much engaged in. I expect that to be rolled out on a priority basis initially within the next couple of weeks, which is great news. The highest counties, the highest positivity rate counties are going to receive the majority of the vaccines first. That is not McLean County. McLean County, we're at a 13.6 positivity rate and our ICU capacity is below 20%. So that does not put us in one of those highest counties based on our COVID numbers, which is a good thing. Number two, there are seven liquor complaints for noncompliance that actually come before you, Mayor, the Liquor Commissioner. Tomorrow, I believe, is the hearing, definitely sometime this week if it is not tomorrow. I do know that Jeff Jergens and Town of Normal Corporate Counsel, Brian Day, they talk often. I think Town of Normal might be having a study session tonight about adopting the, formerly adopting at a local level, the governor's emergency order and enforce that locally. So that's something we're keeping our eye on, which doesn't necessarily mean that we got to do exactly what the Town of Normal does or them follow suit with us, but it's something that we're keeping an eye on. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate that, Mr. Gleason, and thank you for all the work that you're doing. And the next is actually a very special commemoration anniversary for me. I'm so glad that Dave Bentley is here. Certainly have worked with Dave on a lot of these issues over time and it's with great honor and humility and pride in our community that I want to read the proclamation in recognition of Prairie Pride Coalition's 25th anniversary, a quarter century of making progress for people so that we can actually begin to appeal to our better instincts, not the worst instincts of us as human beings. And there's some, whereas the Advocacy Council for Human Rights, known as the Prairie Pride Coalition, was organized 25 years ago. And whereas the Prairie Pride Coalition sponsored a community meeting on a snowy Sunday evening in November 1995 to push for the city of Bloomington to expand its human rights ordinance to include protections for people based on their sexual orientation, excuse me, and whereas this community meeting occurred at the Bistro's LGBTQIA bar and de facto community center. And whereas the Prairie Pride Coalition in 2002, an incredible day for our community, helped gain passage of an amended human rights ordinance that ensured protections for members of the local gay, lesbian, and bisexual community who live and work in Bloomington. And whereas the Prairie Pride Coalition has pushed for passage of additional laws on the local and state levels and ensure equality, inclusion, and justice for members of the Bloomington Normal LGBTQIA community. And whereas members of the Prairie Pride Coalition have worked to raise awareness and education and seek justice for local marginalized communities within the LGBTQIA community. And whereas the Prairie Pride Coalition continues to work on a variety of local projects and programs that help make Bloomington Normal area a more welcoming, just, safe, inclusive environment for all members of the LGBTQIA community. Therefore, it be resolved that I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, extend my sincerest congratulations on behalf of the City of Bloomington to the Prairie Pride Coalition and wish it continued success as it continues to pursue equality and justice for all members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersexual, and asexual community. Thank you very much. And Dave, are you on the phone? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Dave, anything that you would like to add? And I just want to say, this is, this is a great honor. I'm so great, so honored to be Mayor of Bloomington, to be able to read this proclamation after 25 years.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Renner, for this proclamation and recognition of the Prairie Pride Coalition. We welcome the opportunity to continue to work with city leadership as we strive to ensure the Bloomington Normal community offers an inclusive, welcoming, and equitable environment for LGBTQI plus people. To that end, and from a personal standpoint, I hope the city council will seriously consider adoption of a welcoming city's ordinance that would be consistent with action the council took 18 years ago when it adopted a human rights ordinance that offered protections to the Bloomington gay and lesbian community. At the time of its passage, the ordinance was not consistent with state and federal laws, but council members felt strongly that justice and equity were needed for all people living and working in Bloomington. It was the right thing to do then, and it is the right thing to do now. Again, on behalf of the Prairie Pride Coalition, I thank you for this recognition, and we wish you all a happy holiday season.
Thank you very much, Dave, and thank you for all you've done for our community and to help, again, appeal to our better angels. Thank you. At this point, we move on to a recognition of appointments to various boards and commissions. I'm going to turn this over to Madam Clerk. Are there names to recognize?
Yes, thank you, there are. Don Peters to, for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission and Nambandi Kinkar to the Human Relations Commission, and sorry if I didn't say that name right, I apologize.
Thank you very much.
On your appointment.
Okay. Next, we're going to move to our public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have people on the line?
We do, we have four registered. The first one up is Kathryn Hoy.
Kathryn? Kathryn, you have up to three minutes. Can you hear us?
Just a reminder, people have to push star six to unmute themselves on the phone calls.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, star six, please. Okay. Madam Clerk, we may as well, we'll extend, we'll hold that spot in case we can get her on. Would you go at number two, please?
Yep. Next up is Juliet Lind.
Juliet?
Hi, good evening. My name is Juliet Lind. I'm a resident of the city of Bloomington. I also am faculty at ISU, and in that role, I am involved with CALSA, which stands for Coalition Advocating for Undocumented Student Achievement. My comment today is to urge the city council to adopt a welcoming ordinance for the city of Bloomington. I would specifically like to address anyone who believes that such a measure is unnecessary or unwarranted, the whole disopinion is to either disregard evidence or to be blatantly unaware of the lived realities of undocumented people and their loved ones in our communities. Anyone who is connected in any way to immigrant communities that include undocumented individuals knows that the threat of collaboration between Bloomington Police and the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, known as ICE, is real. Email exchanges obtained by a Freedom of Information Act request by Illinois People's Action and the American Civil Liberties Union in 2018 show that there is indeed a history of collegial exchange between the BPV and ICE, and this includes exchanging information about individuals posing no threat of criminal behavior. Conversations with members of the community offer ample evidence of the ways in which current policing practices do not create a welcoming environment for immigrants, in particular those who are undocumented. It is urgent that we all acknowledge the vital role that undocumented immigrants play in our community. They work here, providing essential services, and putting themselves at greater risk during the pandemic. They go to school here, preschool through university, despite no access to federal financial aid, I might add. They fall in love here, build families here, go to church here, open businesses here, shop here, pay taxes here. They are neighbors, coworkers, colleagues, and friends, and they do not deserve to live in fear of the police. I have known students whose parents cannot drive them to college out of fear of getting stopped by the police over a traffic violation, because that's what we are talking about, creating an ordinance to prevent a situation in which a routine traffic stop can end up tearing a family apart. Make no mistake, to hand someone over to ICE is to send them to an organization that has garnered a litany of allegations of abuse, including the infamously called cells in which people are held, known as the ice box, allegations of sexual abuse of women and children, a lack of sanitary conditions and attention to health care, the forced sterilization of immigrant women in custody, and the family separation policies that tear families apart. It is imperative that our city do everything in its power to work against this inhumane punishment of immigrants and to create what truly is a welcoming community to all. Please, I urge the council to adopt a welcoming city ordinance as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can we go back to our first participant?
Yes, Kathryn Hoy.
Kathryn, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Kathryn. Go ahead, you have three minutes, up to three minutes.
Sorry, sorry about before. So I wanted to express some disappointment when I heard Mboka's comments in a recent interview with WGLT, those in which he referenced the welcoming cities ordinance for Bloomington. I am insulted to hear him say that we ought to trust the Bloomington Police Department when he has given audience to plenty of constituents, including myself, voicing their distrust in the Bloomington Police Department. When I explored further about his proposed agenda as Bloomington mayor, I became confused. There were some contradictory messages that gave me concern for his service, whether it be as a council member or as mayor. He talks about an appreciation for diversity and wanting to bring our communities closer together, but also expresses an ultimate goal of cutting municipal spending. I am also reading through his sentiments about building up our economy with great suspicion for fear that those in need in our community will be increasingly ignored for the tradeoff of economic growth. My confidence in any of you on this council will be much easier won with talk and actions that focus on the well-being of our community on an individual level, not an economic level. In a time where so many of our businesses are struggling, I would much rather see them being supported and cared for than investments that try to draw new business. My request for this council this evening and moving forward is that you consider the well-being of all of your community members. If you do so, I promise you will be pleasantly surprised at the positive impact on all aspects of our community's health and growth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next.
Next up, we have Marty Siegel.
Hello.
Hello, Marty, we hear you. Can you, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, you hear me? Okay, yes, I'm Marty Siegel. I'm a 40 resident of the Old East Side, and I'm calling about the Liquor Commission issue with 706 North Clinton. When the Liquor Commission denied a license for 706 North Clinton in 2014, Commissioner Renner told the Samhans they needed to build trust with the neighborhood. But no one in the Samhan family has reached out to anyone I know, I finally do know one person, pardon me, about this proposal. Instead, they are asking to sell all forms of alcohol and for longer hours than the package stores by the highways. The license they had some years ago was only beer and wine. Binnie's, for example, closes at 6:00 PM on Sunday and 9:00 PM the rest of the week. The Samhan store would be open until 10:00 every night. Liquor stores have been tried and failed three times in this area. The triple murders at the S&amp;S store in the 80s proved that a liquor store open at night in a quiet neighborhood would attract robbers and other illegal activities. After that, we had Hucks and Price Right, and both undermined neighborhood stability when they sold alcohol. It's been peaceful in the Old East Side since Price Right was forced to stop selling alcohol eight years ago in 2012. So we have, we have had peace since then. Mr. Samhan also owns the Annie Zietz building, so he's proven that he can develop a viable business in the neighborhood without selling alcohol. The neighborhood could use an attractive and clean convenience store. It's impossible to imagine that an area that has been repeatedly undermined by liquor stores can now be saved by the addition of another liquor store, this time one that sells even more kinds of liquor. Besides the cost to the neighbors, the cost to the city for police calls and the cost of monitoring by the Health Department have not been weighed against the potential tax dollars the store might generate. And it is not right for the city to risk a fragile neighborhood for the benefit of a long time, for the benefit of long-time out-of-town investors who have not shown any interest in the community. The building's been owned by members of the same family for about 20 years, and I don't think it's right for us to give opportunity to out-of-town people who have shown no respect for the community, especially this opportunity. Thank you for your thoughtful attention to this matter.
Thank you, Marty. Madam Clerk.
Next up, we have Kyle R.
Kyle?
Yeah, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome, okay. Thank you for having me, Council. I wanted to speak today on a, on the matters of the welcoming cities ordinance. I am disappointed in the comments that Mboka made in regards to the ordinance. The system of policing is very problematic, especially in the United States, and expecting them to follow any kind of protocol in relations to undocumented or documented immigrants, including their implicit biases, is not 100% accurate to what they are trained to do and what they have been doing for a very long time. I would like to urge the council to take up the welcoming cities ordinance and to really consider helping the community become a safer place and for all citizens to feel like they can be safe to call the police if need be for, you know, any crimes that are being committed while not being fearful of being deported or being taken into custody by ICE. Thank you very much for your time, and I, that's it.
Excuse me, thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we had one, we had one, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry. We had one other person, Trevin Gaffney, that registered but is not present in the meeting. And then we received emailed public comments from three individuals, Michaela Atkins, Juliet Lind, and Kyle Nero, and those have been provided to council.
Great. Thank you very much, we appreciate that, Madam Clerk. Next, we move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes, item 8C.
8C, as in Charlie?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Bowlin, Councilmember Emig?
Yes, thank you. Item F, as in Frank.
Okay, item 8F, as in Frank. Any other items? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of items 8C and 8F?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Mathie. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Motion carried, no need to announce, Madam Clerk. We're going to go to item 8C first, in the order in which they were pulled. Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes, thank you. This is the monkey exhibit, and I do appreciate that there are sometimes unforeseen things that happen. I want to be sure that this change order is $50,000 total. Is that correct?
Mr. Gleason?
Looking for mute, sorry about that. There is a, the change order actually is for $31,000, but not to exceed $50,000 if anything additional comes up. But the expected additional cost is truly 31 and some change.
Okay. And that, of course, is in addition to the $50,000 loan from the park dedication, as far as over and above the grant money, correct?
This is an over and above amendment from what council has previously approved.
Okay. Could you explain? Well, my concern is really that the, the reason the money is available is because of deferred projects from this year and the concern that maybe those deferred projects will not be able to move forward for next year, depending on our finances as a result of COVID. I'm not happy about this, but since we are committed to the contract already, I will be voting yes, but I just wanted to share my thoughts and concerns. So I will make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second by Councilmember Mathie? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Council, thank you. Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion carries, no need to announce, excuse me, no need to announce, Madam Clerk. We're going to turn to item 8F, as in Frank, and that was pulled by Councilmember Emig. Julie, go ahead, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This, this morning alone, I've received about 15 emails and 16 phone calls from my constituents who are opposed to granting this liquor license. I understand there's a petition for those who support it, but I'd say that they're probably about evenly split on this point. And it was a very tough decision for me because the petitioner, Mr. Samhan, contacted me last summer to describe a plan to open this liquor store at 607 Clinton, and there are some really good components to the model, namely the renovations, as well as Mr. Samhan's expressed desire to relocate to the community with his family. Even so, I, I am not going to vote in support of this. First, there has been a lot of conversation and communication to me about the fact that this, this business has been in the same family for a couple of decades and has not demonstrated that, at least via past practice, that there is follow-through and ultimately commitment on the part of, of the development to work for the, the community. And indeed, most of the comments I've received are more about the historical management of the place and, and less about the fact that it will be a liquor store, although I've heard some comments about, about that, too. And second, I need to be responsive to the large swath of constituents who have made a point of communicating with me directly. I did consider sending this back to the Liquor, Liquor Commission for further public exchange, but ultimately decided against this approach because I genuinely, genuinely do not think it will make a difference at this time. And finally, I would just like to share with my colleagues, if not this development, then what? Like, this is a hard area to develop, so given the challenges, what would work here? And what is our messaging to developers in this area? I'd be very interested in hearing from Ms. Melissa Han about her response to ways we can advocate for more development, despite my decision today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Emig, is, Councilmember Yoka, excuse me, Councilman, Madam Clerk, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to also point out, Mayor, that we do have Attorney Rich Marvel and Mr. Salmon on the line in case council does have questions for the applicant and his attorney.
Okay, in that, we, I wouldn't need to turn to Mr. Jergens about, just, just in terms of, if we get to that point, because at least in terms of the Liquor Commission, Liquor Commission is supposed to pursuant to a public hearing where people are entitled to come in and speak. We had two people speak in opposition, we had a couple people speak in favor of it. That's what we have to base our decisions upon, not something that may have happened 12, 15, or 30 years ago on the site. So at this point, is there a motion either way on this so we can begin whatever discussion we might have?
I make a motion that we vote no on this as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Correa. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion then that we vote no on the liquor license as presented on 706, just to make that clear, Locust. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Again, the motion is to deny.
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
No need to announce, Madam Clerk. We then move right along to our public hearing, under nine A, public hearing for substantial amendment to the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Annual Action Plan as requested by the, excuse me, Economic and Community Development Department. And at this point, we have a brief presentation, we're up to about 10 minutes, by Jennifer Tony and a brief council discussion. And I'm going to start with Mr. Gleason, do you want to, any preparatory remarks before we turn it over, Ms. Tony?
Just a couple of quickies. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight's presentation by Jennifer is one that is not going to require any future action by council. Part of this presentation is rolling out what I'll call round two of the CDBG CARES Act money, where we actually talk about the programs that we're providing. And this includes, of great interest to many, includes the business grants that we did earlier, and we brought those back, increased the dollar amount for consideration, and then also expanded the, you know, expanded the criteria for those to apply and for the individual assistance as well, and then direct funding to some of the entities that are also providing that assistance to the community. But I'm going to hand it over to Jennifer, and I'm going to mute. Here you go, Jennifer.
Jennifer, are you there?
Yeah, I am, can you hear me?
Yeah, fantastic, go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Gleason, and thank you, Council and Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to go over our plans, our proposed plans for the second round of our community, our CDBG coronavirus funding. So it was probably about, I don't know, a few months ago, we found out we were going to be getting quite a bit more money in the second round of the coronavirus funding than the first. So created a few additional opportunities for us. So I'm just going to, going to jump right in to what, what we think the needs are of the community and what we need in order to effectively manage the program. and what we need in order to effectively manage the program, um, because those are really, they're four basic um activities we would like to allocate the funding to. So the first is providing twenty five thousand dollars in emergency shelter assistance. Um, we know that the shelters are currently um operating at about half capacity so that they can provide social distancing for those that are staying there, and these would be the homeless shelters. Um, they also have reduced capacity within their warming centers. So, we're, there's a lot of concern in the community about what's going to happen um to our homeless population that already exists, uh, let alone um if the moratorium on evictions um ends. Um, we don't wanna add to the, the problem either, so um, I've spoken with representatives from PATH and uh we already give them ten thousand dollars out of our regular CDBG allocation. Um, so we discussed an amount of funding that would be appropriate for them to add to other funding sources that they have to be able to provide temporary emergency shelter for homeless residents um as long as the shelters are at reduced capacity. So, the majority of this funding would be used for hotel rooms to get people off the street in extremely cold weather. Um, and we're proposing twenty five thousand dollars would be added to that program. Again, those funds are in addition to what PATH already has to operate with. The second program would be administration. We did not allocate any administrative funding from the first round. And so, um, we're requesting that, or suggesting that we add some funding in this round. Um, because CDBG's uh coronavirus funding wasn't really even cons- uh i- in consideration when we originally created our budget for CDBG. We didn't add any additional funding in to even cover basic administrative expenses like postage, office supplies, and things like that, advertising. And so, we have a need for some additional funding for, for those types of, of items. But in addition, um, in order to effectively manage our programs, we need some staffing. And so, um, our current, we're currently have a full-time temporary um employee who's managing the phone line, um, our email, helping to um upload applications when they come into the system, helping me with mailing letters um for backup documentation and things like that. Um, we need to be able to continue that in order to provide the, a, a, a level of service um that's adequate. And we also will be um hiring a grant specialist position, which will help with a variety of duties. Um, but this initially will be one of their primary focuses because we know the need is great, um, is to help manage this COVID money, specifically the residential um side of things. And this position was always intended to be grant-supported. Um, so that since the majority of their duties when they initially start would be to work on this program, then we would um be using some of the funding to support that position. We currently have an agreement with MidCentral Community Action. Um, their COVID money is nearly depleted. So, we were going to be in a situation where they were going to have to start referring all of their COVID applications that, for Bloomington residents to us. And being that we're a little bit short-staffed as it is, we entered into an agreement and they graciously agreed to manage those cases that come in for seventy dollars a case. So rather than someone submitting an application to MidCentral and then them forwarding it to us, and then that being added to our queue of existing applications, they're gonna be able to process that person's application a lot faster. Um, and then, once they get all the case management done, they'll send it to the city and we'll actually review it, um, do the final approval, and then make payment on it. Um, we're allowed to spend up to twenty percent of our administrative money or of our funding on administration, which would be a total of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So the suggestion of the seventy five thousand is quite a bit under where we are allowed to spend. It's actually only eight point five percent, and that amount is just, are significantly lower than what we normally spend on administration, which is between ten to thirteen percent. Um, we would like to add more funding to the residential aid program. Um, we currently, um, with the amount that we're proposing added to the first round, it would be about fifty one percent of the total funding available would be used to support residents. Currently, we have received more than four hundred applications at the city alone, um, and then that would include referrals into the program from other agencies. But until just recently, we were the payer of last resort, so most of those applications were um referred out to other organizations. Since the MCCAs COVID money is nearly gone, and we also got additional guidance from HUD that said we do not have to be the payer of last resort. And we are currently handling all of the applications that come to the city directly um with our own staff. On November first, we sent out a flyer uh for the program to, um, we included the flyer with all of the, the mailings that went out to the landlords, and the response has been very significant. We're getting far more applications than we have ever had in the past. And I'm very pleased to say that many of the landlords are going above and beyond to make sure that their tenants are getting the assistance that they need. Um, we have one landlord in particular who is sitting down with the, the tenants and helping them fill out the application and making sure that they have all the documents, so the application is complete when we get it. Through today, we've approved approximately sixty five thousand in payments. Um, we've approved fifty cases, which means we've committed up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the round one funding. So, we're committing the full five thousand per, per case, knowing that most likely we aren't gonna pay out the full thou- five thousand because we're limited to six months of assistance per household. So, any funds that are not used by a particular household roll back into the fund, and we would reallocate them to another household. We currently have resp- uh waiting on responses from twenty six applicants where we've reviewed their case um and found the file to be incomplete. We have fifty uh cases in line. The biggest challenges with this program have been incomplete applications. When we have an application that comes in that's complete, um, we can process it in about an hour and a half from start to finish. When it's missing important documentation that we absolutely have to have, sometimes it can take three to four weeks for people to, for the correspondence back and forth. So, we really need um everyone to help spread the word. If they're gonna submit an application, we need it to be complete. Um, on the business side of things, and we're proposing additional funding to that program as well. Thirty eight, uh, thirty eight percent of the, of the total funding is what we would be recommending for the business program. Uh, we are awarded, or allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to thirty five businesses in round one. Um, most of the businesses that we supported have fewer, um, ten or fewer employees. Each business that we support is required to retain at least one job for a lower moderate income person for a period of at least six months. And in many cases, the employee that they're retaining is actually the business owner because they are considered low mod and they're the only employee. Um, round two program rules are gonna vary slightly, um, with uh round one increasing the funding from forty five hundred to five thousand, um, to keep it consistent with the residential program. Um, but um more el- more businesses are gonna be eligible to, oop, excuse me, more businesses will be eligible to participate. So in round one, we limited it only to businesses that were considered non-essential per the stay-at-home order. And uh, we will be increasing that so that bars and restaurants and other restaurants or other businesses are able to apply. Um, because of those changes, we're asking for a little bit larger portion of the round two funding to go to this program than we did for round one. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank, first of all, I'm gonna say thank you very much, Jennifer. We really appreciate that and, and appreciate all of your efforts in terms of extreme efficiency and effectiveness in the extent to which you're able to be processing these things i- as little as an hour and a half. That's awesome. And certainly glad that the landlords have generally been very supportive and working with people. But at this juncture, we're gonna begin our ten minute, roughly ten minute council discussion. Comments or questions from members of the council? Seeing, oh, oh, Councilmember Painter, I, at least I, I thought you, I saw your hand there.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Jennifer. She's done an awesome job through this whole COVID thing. And uh, it's much appreciated by both the council and the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. That, that absolutely, again, I, I uh absolutely concur. Thank you, Jennifer. I, I was not as profuse in my praise as I should have been at the very beginning. Thank you, Councilmember Painter. Uh, anything else? And thank you so much. We appreciate that. We're gonna, this-
Mayor, I'm sorry to, to interrupt. Um, you have Councilmember Crable and Councilmember Correa with their hands up, and then also-
I have that on there. Councilmember Correa and Crable, okay, in that order. Uh, Correa and Crable. Jen?
I think, I think Jeff was first.
But that's, I, I just called on you, so go ahead.
Oh, um, so I guess my first question, uh, clarifying question, on the agenda item, um, it says that uh, don't take any action on this item, um, and so curious about, I mean, I have feedback and I have thoughts on, on the way that we are allocating these funds, um, but I guess for the sake of clarity, just first wanna ask, like, what is even the possibility of moving, moving how this is implemented?
Yeah, uh, either uh Jennifer or uh City Mentor Tim Gleason, any uh comments on that? If councilmembers have some uh suggestions for different priorities under this? Jennifer or Tim? Tim?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, I was actually having troubles hearing. Uh, but I think I uh have the gist of the question from uh Alderwoman Correa. And uh, this is a document that's uh required uh to be sent to HUD. Uh, but we can always amend the appropriations uh if uh council so desires. Jennifer, anything to add?
No, I was just gonna say that um with our citizen participation plan, a substantial amendment is triggered anytime that we either add an activity, which we would be adding two ac- new activities with this, the emergency shelter assistance and the administration. And then, um, if we, if we move money in an amount more than a hundred thousand dollars, it triggers a substantial amendment. Um, and the way that our, uh, the regulations are written, and then also the way the citizen participation plan is written, a substantial amendment requires a public hearing, but it doesn't require council approval. It's not to say that we can, I mean, we need to have all of the comment and discussion that we can. Um, but it can go into HUD exactly like it is right now, and as long as we're not moving more than a hundred thousand dollars, we can admit, we can move that money without making another amendment at any point.
Got it. Thank you so much. Yeah, so I guess my feedback is that, you know, uh, as a gut reaction, it feels odd that um these funds which are um are being allocated through HUD um would come to us and that we would spend such a small percentage of those funds on uh housing for homeless people, particularly you know, one of the main, um, w- w- I, I, I would say one, one of the, the main concerns with the most vulnerable populations in terms of the virus. Um, so, uh, I'd like to see that number um go up as well as the number that's available for direct assistance to individuals. I know that when we had uh folks uh coming to public comment and, and writing to council, um, that was, that was the number one thing that was, that was being requested, was assistance for the myriad of things that, that folks um need. So I guess I uh, and I guess, and the last piece is also the administrative staff. Um, I, I personally don't feel that that's money that should come uh from this pot. Uh, like, if we are spending money on administrative costs, I think we should pay for that. Um, and we should free up as much money possible to go into the pockets of, of people. Um, you know, uh, I, I looked around a little bit at how other cities are spending this. Um, Peoria got wo- only one million dollars, and they're spending two hundred K um in homeless shelters as opposed to our twenty five K. So that feels like a pretty significant uh disparity there. Um, and like Juliet, you know, isn't, isn't doing any sort of business, small business uh assistance and are allocating most of their money to go towards rent and utilities and mortgage assistance. And so, um, I guess I am not clear on h- how these priorities uh came to be, and I'm curious about what the thought process is there.
I can respond real quick. Uh, I mean, we're fortunate that we're not Peoria and don't have uh near the need that they do uh with their homeless pop- uh population. And that's not to say that we don't have uh, you know, those kinds of concerns uh here in this community. Uh, the other thing as far as the administrative fees, if we exhaust these funds, no different than what we were saying in the early, uh, you know, the early days of uh COVID. If we exhaust these funds that we've received, well, then we will be coming back to council and saying that the need continues. Uh, and uh, we need to provide uh for these various programs, and that likely comes out of, uh, or that possibly, uh, but the likely source would be out of uh city reserves if we get beyond what our capacity is with the existing CDBG funds.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just to me, it, it's also a matter of optics, like, I just don't, I don't love that people would look at this and say, oh, they spent about half as much on administrative costs that they, that they made av- available to people, um, in terms of cash assistance. Um, 'cause like that seventy five is, is not that far away from the two twenty six that's being presented, so um, I, I, since the money is fungible, I wonder if there is a way that we can actually um not have the administrative costs come out of um, of the CARES money.
Jen, if I could underst- it's, to understand your um uh concern, then it's, i- if we're really going to be stepping up to the plate, then I think what you're saying is maybe the administrative costs should have been absorbed by us to begin with, rather than coming out of this. And as you're saying, the optics, the perception might be that we're trying to cover some of our own costs with money that should be directed toward those in need. Is that a fair statement?
Yep, you put it together pretty well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Tim, you get that?
I did, Mayor, and I'm actually going to uh bounce it back to Jennifer uh to clarify, uh, are these funds being used for MCCA? Or are they something that truly are covering our administrative costs?
Jennifer, and then, uh, just to, just uh to note, um, I did see Councilmember Ward, and she has, I saw your hand. Uh, Council, or excuse me, Jennifer.
Okay, so, um, for the administration, I would like to address first the seventy five thousand. Um, we have to add our, our total funding that's available to this program. So, the seventy five thousand is actually only eight and a half percent of the total available funding because we have round one and round two, and then we also allocated some of our regular CDBG allocation to this. So our total funding available that we're making available, or our total funding that we're making available is um nine hundred thousand sixty, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand ninety-three dollars. So you have to consider that for the total. Um, as far as how much we're paying MCCA, um, I don't expect that to be over probably seven thousand dollars of the seventy-five thousand. The rest would be um to cover um our staff expenses. Um, and I'll be honest, I mean, if we want to truly manage the program in the most effective way that we can, we would need additional staff above and beyond what we already have, um, that we already have planned. Um, so I just would like for you to consider that, um, when you're discussing the administration. Um, if I could real quick, address the emergency shelter assistance and the twenty-five thousand. I did have a, a fairly significant um discussion with PATH to determine what the needs would be. And um, you know, PATH is the lead for the continuum of care. They received a grant uh in emergency, um, it's an emergency solutions grant that also has, um, I think, two or three hundred thousand dollars in it, um, that would also go towards homelessness prevention. Um, and so they did feel that the twenty-five thousand dollars would be adequate to get them through. We don't know what's coming down the road in any of this. I would suspect that when the allocations are announced for fiscal year, um, oh gosh, we're coming up on twenty-two, I guess, that we're gonna be able to have some more flexibilities with that money as well. Um, so, nothing that we would decide on is gonna be set in stone. It's all, it, it's, it's nothing that can't be changed later.
Thank you. Just one last clarification is, you had said, um, that that, that PATH said that that was enough to make it through. Um, and I'm just curious about what you mean by make it through what? Make it through the winter, make it through the COVID? Go ahead.
No, the emergency shelter is, is for the winter months, um, to provide the hotels to get people out of the cold weather, um, when they cannot get into a shelter. Um, there's other, I mean, we get, in this community, um, between all of the grantees, we get, I think, around a million dollars a year in other homeless service money, um, that, that lasts the whole year.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Um, Jen, any, is that to answer your questions? Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move next to uh Councilmember Ward and then Bray. If this takes long, we're gonna have to ask for an ext- If this takes long, we're going to have to ask for an extension of time. Uh, Councilmember Ward.
I, I think Jeff was next.
I was gonna say, Mayor, if I could, you, you have a, yeah, Councilmember Crable.
Oh, I apologize. That's right. I cut Jeff off to, to.
And then also Councilmember Matthew has his hand up now too. So Crable, Bray and Matthew.
Okay, all right. So we're going to start with Jeff. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I agree with what Alderwoman Correa said. And I, I'm strongly against us using any of the funds we get for administrative cost. We can put that 75,000, add that directly on to residential rental assistance. And we can cover that cost. The funds we get for COVID should go to COVID relief. On the business side, I, I was happy to hear that at least one employee had to be retained. I'm just wondering if we can do more than that. I recall when we were talking about the first round in May, Councilmember Milowamway referenced that the goal of business assistance would be to retain workers. And, and I believe Jennifer Tony mentioned that one of the HUD goals was job creation and job retention. And both Councilmember Milowamway and Bolan ask about job training. Or any, could any of those things be done for the business grant money?
Training is an eligible expense. So that could be something that could be used. As far as requiring businesses to retain at least one job, we're actually going above and beyond with that based on the, the amount of our grants. Because they're small grants, we're only required to retain one job for every $85,000 that we spend. And so we opted to require every grantee to retain at least one job. So we'll be way above what's required. But to ask people for $4,500 to retain more than one job, considering the reporting afterwards, we felt was going to be too onerous.
And, and I wanted just to thank you, Jennifer, for all you've done to lead this program. And if you could talk briefly, I, I was communicating with Melissa today, Hahn, about some reporting that your office can do to give us kind of weekly reports on, on the progress of, of the direct aid programs.
Okay, but before we go to that, if you're asking for yet another articulation of more information, we're, we're way over time as it is. So can we have at least, can I have a quick motion for an extra 10 minutes? And then wrap this up. Shall we move by Councilmember Correa is her second? Second by Councilmember Emi. Madam, could you call the roll please for an extra 10 minutes?
Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bolan.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowamway.
Yes.
Councilmember Emi.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer, go ahead. And if you could respond to Councilmember Crable's request. And then we're going to go on to Councilmember Ward, Bray and Matthew.
Okay, so was the, the, the question about additional reporting?
Well, just ongoing reporting to, to council about, about the progress of the grants.
Yes, I think what, what we had indicate, I had indicated this afternoon is I can start putting a report together that goes out at the end of the day on Friday, that can update on the number of new applications we've gotten that week, the number of applications that we've moved from waiting to in process. If we have had to deny anybody for any reason, we can, we can give you that information as well. And it would just be a standardized report that we'd update every Friday and I would, I would get it to Melissa Hahn, who can then forward it on.
That would be greatly appreciated. Thanks, Jennifer. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward, then Bray and Matthew.
Yeah, both of my questions have, have already been answered with regard to, to, well, one of them has been answered with regard to the use of the administration, administration funds. I am curious, can someone just confirm that there has not been any money given to emergency shelter besides the 25,000 that's being suggested now?
Not from the COVID money.
I'm wondering if some of those administration funds could go toward providing other resources for the homeless population besides things like rent, mortgage, utilities and childcare. So we have, we have homeless population who live in tent cities, for example. And I wonder if there are things that, that those folks could use in terms of emergency assistance that might be helpful to them.
And we would have to be able to tie their crisis back to COVID. For this funding, there has to be a specific tieback. So if they were homeless prior to the pandemic, we wouldn't be able to offer any assistance.
Molly?
Even though, I, I guess, I'm assuming that the 25,000 in emergency shelter funds would be, how, how is that being tied to the COVID crisis?
Because there's less shelter beds. The shelters are currently, they've had to reduce their beds by 50%. So there's not as much room in the shelters. So if, I guess if somebody's in a tent, it, it all depends on the situation. I mean, I guess we would have, we would have to look at each case, I guess, before I would say, no, it wouldn't be eligible. We have to be able to tie it to COVID. So if they've asked for shelter and there was none available, then they're tied to COVID. If we're talking other emergency needs for them, tents and things like that, we would have to leave that up to PATH on how they're going to administer those funds and what they can, what they can do as far as the type of shelter that they can provide.
I guess I'd like to see the emergency assistance for residents expanded beyond things that imply that a person has a home, if that makes any sense. Because I can imagine that, that if I am homeless, I may have expenses related to COVID besides rent, mortgage, utilities and possibly childcare. And I'd like those categories to be expanded, if that's possible.
And we could look into it. The issue is going to be, we can't make payments to a person. We have to make payments on behalf of a person. So, and we're not allowed to do gift cards or things like that. So it would have to be a service where we could issue a check to a vendor.
Well, I suspect we could probably be creative about that. But I think Councilmember Ward makes some really, really good points here. We're, we're coming at this from one vantage point. And this is obviously a very critical thing. If you're living under a tent, that's a problem. That's like a serious problem, especially in this weather. But I'm sorry. Councilmember Ward, I didn't mean to monopolize your time. Did you have another follow up?
I'm done.
Thank you very much. Next, Councilmember Bray and then Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jennifer, for your proposal and for this information. I'd like to speak to this issue of administrative costs and coming at it from the standpoint of end goals being, this need is where it exists, needs to be addressed. And it needs to be addressed promptly, professionally and managed. And that doesn't just fall out of the sky, right? We, we need to be able to have people to administer the programs. And when I hear from our expert staff, a person of the caliber of Jennifer Tony telling me that she needs to be able to build some staff around this and work in partnership with Mid Central Community Action, I listen carefully. And while my gut reaction or optics of things might cause me to ask questions as we've done tonight, I have to then turn and focus in on what are our community needs? What are we seeing? What are, what are our community partners telling us about need? And, and get that kind of information. And then also the recommendation from our staff explaining to us how to meet need with these funds. You know, for anyone on this call or in our city who have been in a position to manage resources and dollars and try to connect money to people, especially when you're talking about federal funds, which we each will be accountable for explaining where they went and how they were spent. If I have a professional staff member telling me they need administration and it's at this low amount of 8%, 8 and a half percent, then I take that very seriously. And I find that my, my analysis of, of the, you know, the experience that people are going through, where they are filling out this paperwork, some folks for the very first time, all the uncertainties that they're going through, timeliness and correct processing is, is paramount. And so again, I would be supportive of, of the administration costs as outlined. And again, I find them reasonable. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And last, Councilmember Matthew.
Thanks, Mayor. So lots of interesting points and good points brought up all the way around. I know that the money coming from HUD has a ton of restrictions of what we can and cannot do on it. And, and for good reason, because we, we saw with like even the federal PPP program, some of the rampant abuses that happened there. It, it did many good things, but it also had abuses happen there. So I can't fault HUD for trying to, to maintain some stuff. My question for Jennifer is, so you referenced the fact that MCCA is running out of money and we are actually going to hire them to help us allocate out the rest of our money. How easily, or how, how do, what's the next step, right? Assuming this money, this pool of money we're putting together runs out and we say, okay, city manager, we want you to take some money from our surplus and we want to extend these funds to the next level. We'll have a little bit more creative freedom on how to make sure the money gets to the right hands for the right people. But what does that next program look like? Are we thinking about that? Are we, are we laying out those plans at this point to say, what do we do when this allocation is over with? And what does that, what does that look like?
Jennifer? Jennifer? Jennifer?
Sorry, I was, I was muted. Sorry. We're, we're not that far yet. I'll be honest. We are taking a day at a time. And I think the, the most important step next is to get the, the additional money allocated so that we know that it's there. Once that happens, we can start thinking about, okay, how long do we, how long do we think this money is going to last? Right now, I can't predict that because we've only been processing the applications that come to us for about a month. So I need to get a couple of months in and see about what we're paying out every month. And then we'll have a better idea of when these funds are going to run out. And then I think we could make a proposal of what, what that next step is.
Okay. No, that's a good answer. I think that the administrative costs are six one half dozen of the other, if we pay it out of the CDBG funds or if we pay out of our budgets. And we're going, we're pretty much, we're going to have to shore this up with money out of our surplus either way as we go along. So it doesn't really matter right now because it's, I don't, I don't think this is going to be the end of the money that we put into this anyway. And I will point out too that, you know, Springfield, Champaign, Urbana and Peoria all do have small business funds that are set up as well because, you know, we need individuals to make it through this, but we also need businesses to make this, make it through this at the same time. So I do think it's appropriate to have both of those in there. We've got more of the money going for the individuals, which I think is appropriate. But we are trying to help businesses get through this as well. And that's going to help us with some of the compliance issues that we've had where businesses are choosing to stay open in a dangerous fashion because people are rightly afraid of their livelihood. You know, this is one of the ways that we can help them. We can encourage them to fill out the, the county and the EDC program to go for the grant money there. We can encourage them to fill out the state big grants. And there's a bunch of programs in place for businesses to try to get through this. So it, it is appropriate. We put most of the money towards individuals, but some of the money go into businesses, I think is appropriate also. So Jennifer, thank you for all the awesome work that you and your staff are doing. It is greatly appreciated and keep on trucking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Tim. And just, Madam, is there anyone who has registered for public comment?
No one has registered for public comment, but you do also now have Councilmember Correa and Councilmember Emi with their hands up again.
Uh, okay, well, we're going to have to, Councilmember Correa and Emi. Okay, well, we're going to have to extend the, the time again because we're once again way over time on this. These are the kinds of questions, though, if you have them, that are useful to ask beforehand. So we can, we don't have to have several versions of this. So can we have a motion? I'm going to, I'm going to say five minutes that we can be optimistic. Is there a motion to extend this by five minutes?
You can skip me and just go to Julie.
Are you quick?
What was that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question based on this conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you. So Jennifer, is, is it fair to say that the admin costs largely go to the vendor? I just want to, I want to make sure I understand the, the recipient of those admin costs. And to reiterate questions that, that had been asked before to, in the future, to look at a way we can increase the numbers of retained jobs even more so, despite the fact that we're above and beyond what we should be doing. Thank you.
And the only person, I mean, other than for general administrative stuff like office supplies, postage, things like that, the only true vendor that we would have would be Mid Central Community Action. And like I said, if they process 100 cases for us, then that's going to be $7,000. You know, so not even 10% of what we have put aside.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no public comments, then we will declare the public hearing to be closed. We're going to move then to a regular agenda, starting with item 10A. And that's presentation of the fiscal year 2020 comprehensive annual financial report as audited and delivered by the audit firm, Baker Tilly, Virchow Kraus LLP, as requested by the finance department. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gleason. And then we're going to have a 10 minute, approximately 10 minute presentation, up to 10 minutes of questions. Mr. Gleason, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is actually an exciting topic. And I'll tell you, it's, it's exciting because our city staff, under Scott's leadership, do such an excellent job. And the presentation should not take that long. Then we have follow up comments, questions by council. But we don't get to this point to where you're going to hear an audit like you, you're going to hear tonight and have heard in the past without there being tremendous behind the scenes efforts and just different processes in place. And that's exactly what we have here at the City of Bloomington. So thank you, Scott, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Appreciate those comments. Very true. The FY 2020 audit was issued on October 14th. It's posted on the city website. The audit is a very intensive, almost six month process. It involves staff throughout the city, incorporates a lot of different components, the pension audits, actuarial reports, you know, things of that nature. I want to extend a thank you to, to all the staff that were involved and all the other parties to, to get us to this point. The audit is very important, a document and instills confidence on our financial reporting in the community and all of our debt holders as well. The firm Baker Tilly performed the audit. This is the fifth year they've done it. We've been very pleased with the service and professionalism they've provided. Jason Coyle is a partner with the firm and he's here tonight to provide a high level review of FY 2020 budget. Excuse you, budget. I'm thinking budget already. All right. Jason, over to you, sir.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Scott. Good to be with you. I'll keep my remarks rather brief. Scott does have a really good point. The audit. Scott does have a really good point. The audit is a very intensive process for everybody. And this year with COVID, it was done remotely as well, so that's a unique twist to, to the audit process. And we appreciate Scott and his team, you know, getting everything for us electronically. And thankfully, technology is such that, that we're able to do that, you know, with, with few hiccups, but it, but it did add a little twist to, to the process. So I really appreciate Scott and his team working through that process. So I'm, like I said, I'm going to keep my remarks rather brief for you. We do have some pages from your CAFER that if you could put them up on the screen, we, I could walk through them, otherwise I'll just talk, talk through, there we go. So you do issue, as, as is noted here, a comprehensive annual financial report or CAFER for short. You can see this says of your fiscal year end for 4/30, April 30th, 2020. The comprehensive annual financial report, as its name provides, is, is comprehensive in its nature, meaning it has additional information other than you're actually required to have in your annual financial report. So that's great for users of the financial statements. It just provides a higher level of transparency of your operations and of your financial information. So congratulations on continuing to, to issue a comprehensive annual financial report. If you could go to the next slide there. So there's three pages in your CAFER which come from our firm, and this is our audit opinion or independent auditor's report, as it says. And so these three pages is the only information from our firm. The rest of the 175-plus pages is, is your financial information. So our, our opinion this year, as it has been in the past, is what we call a clean opinion or unmodified opinion. It's the higher, highest level of assurance we could provide over the financial information. In layman's terms, what it means is that somebody could pick up your financial document here and evaluate it and evaluate the financial health of the city in all material respects and be able to rely on the information that's in here. So the one thing I'll point out about our opinion, it does note that the Miller Park Zoological Society and the Police Pension Fund were audited by other auditors, so they're not audited by Baker Tilly, but their financial information is incorporated within your CAFER here. You could go, the next couple of pages here are the conclusion of the opinions. You could go through here. One more page, please. I always like to point out this page. This is the Management's Discussion Analysis or MDA. It comes immediately following our opinion. I know not everyone comes to the council and, and wants to pick up 175-page document and read through it, but I do encourage governing bodies to read through the MDA or Management's Discussion Analysis. As the term implies, management helps write it, and it does a great job of kind of highlighting what went on through, during the year and provides some comparisons from prior year and current year. Now, if you go onto the next slide, please. This is where we really get into the meat of the financial statements. This is what's called the Statement of Net Position. There's two pages to this, and you could also see you have a couple of component units here, the Library Foundation and the Miller Park Zoo. What I really like to point out about this statement, and this is where you take all the funds of the city and combine them down basically into two columns, the governmental activities and the business-type activities. This statement also incorporates all of your capital assets, and on the next page, you'll see all of your long-term liabilities. And really, kind of the, the biggest thing I point out about here on the next slide is the long, one of the long-term liabilities incorporated here is your net pension liabilities. So in Illinois, we talk about pensions quite a bit in the fact that they generally tend to be not as well-funded as some of the surrounding states. And this is kind of the one time of year that, that we really talk about those net pension liabilities. So you, you have three pension funds you contribute to, IMRF, your police pension fund, and your firefighters' pension fund. And I should point out that you're contributing above what you're actually required to contribute to each of those on a regular basis now. That said, the net, the, the net pension liability went up slightly from the past year, largely due to the investment earnings, or I should say maybe the lack of investment earnings in the police and firefighters' pension funds, largely related to when your fiscal year end is. So 4/30, the market was down quite significantly because that was the beginning of the COVID pandemic. Thankfully, the market's rebounded quite significantly since then. That said, we do have to measure what the market value was as of April 30th, and so the net pension liabilities went up unfortunately a little bit during the year. So they were up to $157.9 million collectively as of 4/30. If you can go to the next page, actually, we'll go one more page there. This is kind of where we get into what's called your governmental funds. These are probably the funds you're, you're more commonly used to seeing here. Your general fund is your corporate fund, you know, which is your primary operating fund. You can see that fund increased fund balance there near the bottom of the page by $2.3 million. One thing I always like to point out in this fund is I like to compare your fund balance to your expenditures and, and look at that ratio and see, you know, what that ratio is. And I'm sure that's something you, you talk about from time to time. Looking at your total fund balance, your ratio is 36.4%. I know a lot of times communities only look at what we call the unassigned fund balance because your fund balance has different components to it, and so that percentage is a little bit lower. That's about 26%. So what that means basically is you could go a quarter of the year without having any revenues come into your general fund and still be able to, to pay your expenses. So if we go one more slide here, please. So your governmental activities in total here, fund balance is increased by $6.3 million for the year. Go to the next slide, please. This, this next slide here is your business-type activities proprietary funds, so water, sewer, the arena, storm sewer. These, these funds generally are meant to be self-supporting through charges for services. That said, the, the Bloomington Arena does receive some sales tax to help support its operations. You can see, though, that near the bottom of the page, a change in net position, water and sewer, along with storm water, are charging sufficient charges, at least at this point in time, to maintain their, their expenses or pay their expenses and, and maintain their operations and still increase their net position slightly. The Bloomington Arena did, did see a slight loss there of $750,000 for the year. Go to the next slide, please. This is just a conclusion of that page or that statement. Go one more page, please. And this, again, I, I mentioned already, your, your pension liabilities. These are, this second column here is your pension trust fund. So this is your police and firefighters' pension fund. And as I already mentioned, unfortunately, the interest income during this fiscal year was not as, as high as we've seen in past fiscal years. Total investment income was $828,000. So the, the net pension liabilities did increase slightly by the $943,000 in the net pension fund. Hopefully, we'll see that come back around next fiscal year. That's really the conclusion of the, the CAFER. And the financial information I was going to point out here, there's a lot of additional information later on in the financial statements, which gets into great detail, includes a lot of budget-to-actual information, but I won't go into that now. I did want to point out that we do also complete what's known as a single audit, which relates to some of your federal funding. We, we audited the CDBG program, which you've been talking about, and we didn't have any findings over the internal controls or the other compliance matters related to that. So congratulations, congratulations there. The other document I just want to wrap up with is that when we come in to do the audit, we kind of kick the tires on your internal controls or your checks and balances, if you will. And if we identify any recommendations for improvement, we communicate those to you. And there's another document that has those communications in there. We continue to have two small recommendations, one related to utility billing and the other related to the arena. They're classified as what we call significant deficiencies rather than material weaknesses. And the utility billing, I know is going to be hopefully improved with the, the new utility billing software, and we'll see some changes coming in related to that in future years. Also, within that document, that includes these recommendations, it points out new reporting settings that are coming down the road. Thankfully, with what happened with the pandemic, GESB delayed some of the implementation dates of some of the new reporting standards that you're going to have to deal with, but they are still coming. One of the more significant ones relates to leases and how those are going to be reported. So that, that information is incorporated into that document and what we're working with Scott and his team to implement those in future years. That's really the conclusion of my prepared remarks, but obviously, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have related to the audit process or your financial statements in particular.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate that. We're going to go ahead and begin the approximately 10 minutes of council questions or comments. Any comments, questions by members of the council? We certainly appreciate all of what you've done, Mr. Gleason, Mr. Rathbun, and others on this work, but.
Here, you do have Council Member Bowlin with her hand up.
Oh, Donna. Oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry, Donna. I didn't see. Donna, go ahead.
Yeah, I always ask questions with the financial reports. I, I really appreciate all the work, and it was very clear. There are only two questions that I have that I don't understand. And the first one is, what is the employer's net pension liability as a percent of covered payroll? Because it's listed as 636%. Is that, is that good or bad?
Well, I mean, that's neither. It's just a measuring stick, if you will, to give you an idea of, you know, based on your annual payroll for the people that are within that pension plan, how, how large is the net pension liability? So it's not necessarily an indicator of good or bad. It's just to kind of give you an idea of, of, you know, how significant, I guess, you would say that net pension liability is. You know, I think the percent that I, I usually look at is your funded percentage. I don't have those right in front of me right now.
It's about 52.
Yeah, and that tends to be, you know, the, what people are looking at is, you know, what level of funding are you at on an annual basis? And again, that fluctuates based upon where the, the investments were at the end of the year and the market value. And so as the market value comes down a little bit, your, your invest, your funded ratio is going to come down. You know, as I pointed out in my comments, so you're continuing to contribute quite a significant amount to your pension plans, even above the, what is required, I believe, on an annual basis. And so, you know, to that extent, you're, you're funding them appropriately, and, and hopefully those investment earnings will come back around and increase that funded percentage.
The other question is, has to do with the discount sensitive, sensitivity, which I believe you were referring to with the market going up and down.
Right, right.
And I guess I, I shouldn't say that I don't understand. I guess I was a bit concerned because in the report, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong. It says that the presumed rate of return is about 7%. And then the cost of living plus the inflation would add up to 5%. And then salary increases can go up to 14%. Now, of course, now with the flat interest rate and the market volatility and all that, that does reflect the reason why the pension has gone down and the liability has gone up. Is that correct?
The market value, yeah, fluctuation will, like I said, change that overall funded ratio or the net pension liability as of the end of the year. So the sensitivity analysis that you're talking about is really just there to provide an idea of, okay, you're utilizing what the 7% discount rate, you're accurate in that. And so that, the idea that is that over the long term is what you anticipate your rate of return to be, not in any one year, but over the long term. But, you know, should you be wrong in that estimation? Because it is a little bit of a guess, obviously, of what, what will happen over the long term. The idea of this sensitivity disclosure is to give you an idea, well, how would your net pension liability change? You know, should the market do better than you expect, or should the market do worse than you expect? Because again, it's, it's a little bit of a guess, if you will, as to what the market's going to do over time. So they just want to provide you that disclosure.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work.
Yeah, thank you very much. Great questions, by the way.
Any other questions? Madam Cork, I'm, I'm not seeing any, anybody.
I don't see anybody else.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Coyle and, and Mr. Gleason and our entire, Mr. Rathbun, our entire finance team. Next, we have actually items, excuse me, 10B and C, which are related. And we're going to, I don't know if Scott and, or Mr. Gleason, if you want to handle them together, but it's consideration action on one, an ordinance levying taxes for the City of Bloomington, McLean County for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2020, and ending April 30th, 2021, and an ordinance levying taxes for the City of Bloomington Library. And so we have a presentation there. And the other one is, excuse me, consideration and action on a resolution abating a portion of the taxes and for, under one and two. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Gleason and then Mr. Rathbun. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. And I will not have any opening comments on the next item, 10C. We're simply following the schedule that was outlined for the property tax for this year, and we'll turn it over to Scott. Scott?
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Phil, can you bring up the presentation, please? We are proposing the adoption to be the, the same as the estimate in November. Going to use the exact same screens in the event any members of the community were not able to watch that presentation back in November, but I will be going through them quickly. Next slide, please. Wanted to provide some, some context to some of the terms that we utilize. We utilize this term equalized assessed valuation when it comes to the property tax assessment. Really, the equalized assessed valuation is a one-third factor of a value of a property. So in this example, house valued is at $165,000, the EAV is $55,000. The total combined city and library tax rate that we're presenting this evening is 1.3524%. So the tax on that $165,000 house would be $743.82. Next slide, please. The full assessed value for the city is almost $5.7 billion. What I want to highlight here is that we've had moderate growth over the last few years. That's a good thing. It's not going the other direction. So you can see we have approximately about 0.7% estimated increase. These are from prelim EAVs that we get from the county. Those can change with tax challenges before now and into the year. But as of now, roughly a 0.7% increase in total assessed value for the city. Next slide, please. This is the equalized assessed value based on that. It's a mathematical formula based on the total value of the $5.7 billion. So that 1.9 million, or excuse me, 1.9 billion in equalized assessed value. Most of the increase, looking at the reports that I've seen, came in the commercial area, new construction. Next slide, please. So tonight's levy for adoption is the city and the library with the slight EAV increases that we saw between the prelim and the final for last year. The city and the library able to realize about $166,000 in total additional levy dollars, while at the same time maintaining the same tax rate as what we finished with last year. So that 1.35%, looking at the bottom of the screen there, we've been in that 1.35, 1.34% range for, for many, many years. And we're able to still realize some levy tax dollar increases this year due to the EAV increase. And that's important to the city and the library because costs continue to go up. We have inflation every year. So the increases in the EAV and the related increase in our levy, even though we can keep the, the rate flat, is very important for our budget. Next slide, please. This is just a visual of how the tax, the levy dollars are allocated. The largest component, the 46% is public safety. The next largest component, when we're looking at the combined levy, is for the library at 19%. There's information at the bottom there that breaks out the dollars by category, and those are also detailed in the memo, which is online. Next slide, please. And this is the allocation of all the other taxing districts within the area. I, I put it, I changed the slide slightly from last time and put it math at the top. The city and the library, it's about 16 cents of the dollar, between 15 and 16 cents, or 15 and 16% of the total tax levy, and this was as of last year. So again, we're proposing that we adopt the tax levy as we presented in November with the estimate. The library, excuse me, being at $4,967,785, and the, the city being at $20,645,384. Any questions?
Any questions? Council member, excuse me, council member Bowlin, excuse me. Donna?
Yeah, I just unmuted me. Just for clarification for the people out there in the audience, I just want to, and correct me, Scott, if I'm wrong, 12% of our revenue is from property tax. Is that correct, approximately?
12% of total revenue. So if we're looking at a revenue of $110 million in total revenue, just for the general fund?
Well, just.
Citywide?
I, I think we've had this conversation where most of our revenue is sales tax-based. So the property tax really only provides about 12% of our revenue, correct?
Well, we're, we're doing a total tax levy of about $25 million, and our, our sales tax rep, home rule sales tax is $24 million. State, I, I can't do that off the top of my head, so.
No, you don't have to do the math. We had this conversation that it's about 12%. But anyway, also, I want to make sure that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sticking with property tax, not the entire budget here. The expenditures for property tax goes to. The expenditures for property tax goes to debt, which we were going to talk about today with the abatement, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Two point, but by two point two million of it goes to debt.
Okay, and then uh about fifty percent is for police and fire pension?
Uh, police, fire pension, and we just have two general police protection and fire protection categories, but police and public safety total, yes.
Uh, but it's just the pension. It's not salary. Is that correct?
No, we do have one point nine million considered for fire protection categorized within the levy. And um, one point five million for police protection categorized within the levy. So those were added some years ago into the levy to to help uh augment the staffing.
Okay, in addition to the retirement pension?
Yes.
Okay, and then IMRF, which is for regular employees throughout the city? And Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Okay, so everything else is paid for with sales tax and fees?
Yes, and you know.
Okay.
And and local taxes, you know, food and beverage, all those taxes.
Right, right, okay. I just wanted that to be clear for the public, that property tax pays for this type of stuff, not everything else. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I don't see any other questions then, uh although we are um actually over time and budget. But uh, we're going to go on. Uh, Mr. Uh Rathman, do you have anything to add to item? Or Mr. Gleason, I'm going to start with Mr. Gleason, item ten C? Before, because we can, we can take these, I'm 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 thinking we'll take these two motions, excuse me, together once they're completed. Because we've got some questions that spill over to the other.
I do not, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Rathman, anything else to add to the item ten C?
Well, I, for Jeff Jurgens, do we need to vote on the tax levy first before we vote on the abatements? Because the abatements refer to.
I, Scott, I know, I know that. I'm I'm not, I'm just, is there anything else that you want to add to this discussion before the order in which we take them? Okay, okay, thank you. We'll start then. Is there a recommended motion, uh, excuse me, a motion for the recommendation here? Um, that item ten B be approved, items one and two, is there a motion? Moved by council member uh Painter, is there a second? Count, second by council member Matthew and several others. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? This is.
Thank you. And Mayor, just for clarification, we're doing this for two levies, both the city and the library.
I'm sorry, yes, it's all the items under, uh, excuse me again. Uh, just to reiterate, thank you, Madam Clerk, the items under ten B, both number one and number two.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Matthew.
Yes.
Council member Bowlin.
Yes.
Council member Milowambe.
Yes.
Council member Emi.
Yes.
Council member Painter.
Yes.
Council member Correa.
Yes.
Council member Ward.
Aye.
Council member Crable.
Yes.
And council member Bray.
Yes.
Right. Motion carries no needs to announce, Madam Clerk, then we move to item ten C again, both, I apologize again. Excuse me, item ten C, both number one and two. Is there a motion to approve under ten C? Moved by council member uh Painter, second by council member Bowlin. I don't see any uh comments. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council member Matthew.
Yes.
Council member Bowlin.
Yes.
Council member Milowambe.
Yes.
Council member Emi.
Yes.
Council member Painter.
Yes.
Council member Correa.
Yes.
Council member Ward.
Aye.
Council member Crable.
Yes.
Council member Bray.
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion carries or no needs to announce, Madam Clerk. Again, excuse me, excuse me, I'm going to turn this over to uh Mr. Gleason under ten D. Uh, in terms of um COVID virus updates and emergency measures. Mr. Gleason, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. No uh, no amendments at this time.
Thank you very much. Uh, it, under uh city manager's discussion, then I'm going to turn, oh, excuse me, but before we move on, were the questions of our city manager? Okay, seeing none, uh, now I'm going to turn back to our city manager for city manager's discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a couple of comments. Uh, Phil, could you, there we go. Uh, Bloomington sees in a small, uh, it's something that we've talked about uh prior to the uh Thanksgiving uh holiday, and it continues uh through uh Christmas Eve day. Uh, we had a kickoff, uh fairly busy downtown on Friday. We had First Friday and the uh virtual uh tree lighting event. And uh, please support uh the season of small here in our community. Next slide. Downtown Farmers Market, uh, December nineteenth, uh, and it's at uh Grossinger Motors Arena. Uh, look for updates and uh it will occur from nine AM to one PM. Thanks, Phil. Couple uh of additional comments, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, and and especially for the community. Uh, a couple of things that I think are noteworthy to uh recognize, uh, staff. The uh Fire Department, uh, Fire Chief Eric West shared this, that uh we do an annual FAA audit out at the uh airport. Uh, we obviously have two uh stations out there. Station six, uh, I believe is to the north and uh station three is to the east. And this is something that's conducted uh every year, and uh we received a perfect score. And uh, that's uh no small feat, uh, something that I felt rises to the level to share that at this uh uh meeting uh for the community. And uh Chief West uh shared that a lot of that credit goes to Assistant Chief Carl Reeve, uh, who takes care of the training and the audit certifications for the city. Another one uh that I want to share with the community. Everyone's aware that we are going through and using a company called uh Seamless Docs to, in the clerk's office, to uh try to provide a more efficient uh experience for our residents online. Uh, you know, is what the transition is, moving away from paper. And while we have uh had this relationship for a little while with Seamless Docs, it's one that uh Leslie Yocum, right across the room from me, uh, as our city clerk, has led uh this with uh Seamless Docs. Well, they have identified us as uh one of five cities uh nationwide that are named as leaders in the industry. And they've invited Leslie to uh represent the community and speak at a year-end event that they have about uh what we are doing, how it lends itself to the greater vision for uh the community. And this really, I mean, this is on the heels of a a recent announcement with community development through the National League of Cities. I think we're we're one of eight or one of ten. You know, we're one of five on a uh nationwide uh recognition. So uh hats off to uh Leslie and her team. So that's it, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And uh, just want to thank both you, Tim, and Leslie for all this work. And Leslie, as you're going to uh accept this reward, award, kick it. We are very thrilled, very happy to have you doing this, Leslie. Uh, I um want to thank Alderman Maboka Milowambe for um uh his strong leadership in making sure that we had a mayoral presence at the virtual tree lighting ceremony, since the mayor was um otherwise disposed and probably has COVID. Although at this point, I'm going to find out by tomorrow morning or so. If I do, um, uh, I I'm supposedly twelve days in, so maybe that's a good thing. I'll find out. But thank you, Maboka. I very much appreciate that, and I'm sure our community does. I'd also like to thank our Fire Department for the many times where they have been in uh, obviously not just what they normally do, but where they have been staffing the the kettles for the Salvation Army. And in fact, I I just a a couple of days ago, I guess it was uh Friday, maybe it was four days, five days ago, uh, ran into the gentleman who, uh, Mr. Honig, who made sure that I was an extra crispy mayor when we had the fire ops. And I very much thanked him. He was at the jewel on West Oakland, or excuse me, East Oakland to uh to do that. So I very much appreciate that, uh, and all that you're you're doing for our community. At this point, are there members of the council who would uh have comments? Uh, start with uh, I I'm having.
Mayor, you actually just have one with um your hand up. That's council member Crable.
Council member Crable. Jeff, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, and I talked to uh City Manager Gleason about addressing this issue during uh Aldermanic comments. As uh everyone knows, I brought forth an initiative last month with regard to utility moratoriums. Uh, and uh, a couple of days after uh the council agreed to move forward with that issue, uh, Ameren um stepped in and uh said they were going to uh, at at that point, not shut anyone off um until March thirty first of two thousand twenty one. Uh, therefore, I don't see any further need of the initiative and and will withdraw it. However, I just wanted to point out that um, Tim and and um and Jeff Jurgens have also been helpful in the follow-up because I had a concern about those people that had already been shut off. Uh, and Tim connected me with Stacy Young, uh, Ameren's Community Relations Manager. Uh, and she sent a letter this afternoon saying that uh in in the two months, um, from September to November, six hundred and six hundred and fourteen residential customers were disconnected by Ameren in the Bloomington area. However, now only sixty uh remain disconnected. So um, I I I do, I would like to follow up a little bit more to see what happened with those sixty. Uh, but I just wanted to uh let the community know that are having issues with paying their utilities, that there's the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, LIHEP. Um, with with information you can find on our website, you can call two one one. Ameren, uh, if you don't qualify for LIHEP, Ameren uh also has funds uh available. Um, and and so I just wanted to uh bring that to everyone's attention. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Crable. I would very much appreciate that, especially at this time, because this is a really diff- a difficult time, and we will definitely want to get back to you. Uh, Councilmember Matthew, I do, I see you, I'll I'll just want to, one last comment. One of the reasons why I think it's so important to uh be cognizant of these things is many of us, we we get into our own lives and we uh don't understand how other people, the other, not the other half, the other, more than half of our community live. And one of the reasons why I cannot go past a uh Salvation Army kettle without at least giving something is because I, as a uh a child, single parent, in a single parent household, as an only child, and my mother and I were on off welfare for the time I was seven or eight, to the time I was fifteen. Uh, many times Salvation Army came forward and they paid for our electric bills when they were shut off, our water bills when they were shut off. And this is really, really critical for us to understand as a community. And I feel like I, no matter how old I get, and my kids remind me how what, how old as dirt I am, that um I can't walk by a kettle without putting at least something in to try to give back for the the benefits that I had when I was younger. And that's part of us and who we are as a community. So uh, I do want to thank all of us for our um our efforts here. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. Uh, I wanted to actually uh add on to that a little bit and just say thank you to everybody in the community that donated to our many nonprofits during Giving Tuesday. Um, I saw a lot of that on social media. I saw a lot of that just uh in in announcements. And uh, you know, since I serve on a couple of different boards, um, it it does make a difference for that end of year. Um, you know, boost, especially in a year where nobody is able to have their regular galas or winter fundraisers or things of that nature. That end-of-year fund drive is going to be important to many, many organizations that don't have any other way to do their fundraisers. Um, so just thank you to everybody who has already given. Thank you to everybody who still has a plan to give. The organizations are in desperate need of that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is just a reminder for anybody who might still be watching is that we have another exciting episode next Monday. Um, because of December, where we've got a meeting next Monday, and then we're off until January. So um, just throwing that out there.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthew. Thank you for everything. That's extremely well put and very, very much appreciative of that, Jamie. And absolutely, we have, because of the unusual circumstances, obviously, tonight, we would normally not be meeting for yet another week because this is the first Monday of the month. But um, yes, for this Monday, a week from tonight, we have an exciting episode. And two weeks from tonight, we have our last exciting episode of this calendar year. Thank you very much. At this point, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by council member uh uh Painter, whose finger, fortunately, it's not not the offensive one. And two fingers by council member uh Bowlin, uh, moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Oh, actually, we we're we're adjourned. If you're, if you're really, if you're, if you're really.
Aye.
If you're really.
Aye.
Aye.
Stay on if you're really opposed. Thank you.